Once again, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first half of two acts of the Committee of the Whole meeting for June 18, 2023. I call the Committee of the Whole meeting open, and ask the clerk to again please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Sawansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I believe we will have... Yeah, building and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have one item on building and zoning.
Gunstein.
Yep. As directed by the Committee of the Whole on their June 20, 2023 meeting, staff worked with School District U-46 to address the committee's concerns regarding, number one, the turning radius for buses at the Gerber and Army Trail, two, the vacation of Fair Oaks Right-Away, and three, the safety of Schick Road and Gerber Road intersection. The Villages Traffic Consultant prepared an auto-turn exhibit for buses making right-hand turns northbound onto Gerber Road from Army Trail. Based on this analyst, a bus can turn onto Gerber Road without encroaching into the opposite lane. Representatives from U-46 confirm that buses currently make that turn without incident. Further, staff researched the history of the proposed Fair Oaks Extension in the Thoroughfare Plan. Based on staff's research, the Fair Oaks Road Extension was only recommended if a railroad crossing was built as a cross of Mayflower, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
The railroad will not be approved at grade crossing, and the cost of a separate crossing is estimated between $20 and $30 million. Right-Away would need to be acquired from two property owners that are opposed to the Fair Oaks Extension. A wetland delineation of Right-Away would need to be required to determine if the existing wetlands are regulatorily or critical. Mitigation costs are $175,000 per acre. The mayor and staff met with School District U-46 to discuss the Committee of the Whole's concerns and the impact to the Fair Oaks Road expansion and the school. The district is willing to keep the Fair Oaks Right-Away in order to keep the project on schedule. The construction and realignment of Fair Oaks Road would have the following impacts on the school property. Decreased the amount of stacking for buses at the middle school from 21 to 16 spaces, and the realignment of Gerber, Fair Oaks, and Jacaranda intersection would create more conflict for buses entering and exiting the school site. U-46 submitted a draft intergovernmental agreement, which includes a commitment to collaborate with the village for the next two years on traffic study and cost-sharing agreements for the intersection improvements warranted by the traffic study. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to staff to give us a little bit more rundown on the follow-up to this.
So, as I said, U-46 is willing to give up the Fair Oaks Right-Away vacation. However, there are impacts to that decision. Like trustee Gunstein said, it would create a four-way intersection at the bus lane. It would also reduce the amount of buses that they could have stacked. I'm going to take you back a little bit to talk about the Thoroughfare Plan. The original purpose of the Thoroughfare Plan was to create a north-south connection that would go from South Bartlett Road to Army Trail Road. There's three projects that would have to be incorporated to bring that into fruition. Connect the East Struckman Boulevard south across the railroad tracks, extend Fair Oaks to Gerber Road, and the Fair Oaks and Gerber Road realignment. We have talked to the railroads in 1991, again in 1999. They've expressed no interest in an at-grade crossing and would only support a separated Cost of a separated crossing would be $25 to $30 million. And the extent of grading that would have to take place for that to occur would be 1,500 feet. So, all the homes from Mysteria to the north part of Superior Circle would all be affected by whatever you chose, whether it was an above-crossing or a below-grade crossing. There's also Right-Away acquisition that would be necessary. We heard from two of the property owners during Town Hall. Both of them don't seem interested in this project, and there are wetlands at the corner that have changed over time, so a full wetland delineation report would be required. We don't know if those would be determined to be regulatory or critical, which could limit the construction of Fair Oaks Road. This would... So, the realignment of Fair Oaks Road, which was originally proposed back in 1990, would... This is what the alignment would look like. So, Fair Oaks would continue from Army Trail Road north to Hawk Hollow. Gerber Road would create a four-way intersection with the bus access drive. Gerber Road would not go north, so a portion of Gerber Road would be removed.
So, trustee Christie?
...as proposed by...
Was that the original plan, that Gerber was going to be...
The plan was always to have Gerber Road terminate into Fair Oaks Road to create a four-way intersection. The location of Fair Oaks Road changed due to the lawsuit. Originally, Fair Oaks Road was supposed to be further east and was not supposed to cut through those two parcels that we do not have the Right-Away for. It was further east and was supposed to be more kind of where Hawk Hollow School is located now.
At that point, would Gerber Road have continued on north?
No. At that point, the plans were to have a subdivision, and there would be residential lots in that space between Gerber Road and what is now Hawk Hollow.
Thank you.
So, you can see the difference of what the right of... The impact would be to the school site if Fair Oaks were to be constructed. So, you see that there's now a four-way intersection. Again, to go over the estimated costs, the railroad underpass or overpass is about $25 to $30 million. The roadway realignment, approximately $3 million. Wetland costs are $175,000 per acre, and the land acquisition costs are unknown.
I have a question I'd like to ask you. We're talking about an intergovernmental agreement, which includes a commitment to collaborate with the village for the next two years?
Correct.
Why do we limit it to two years? Where did that number come from?
Because that's when we would see the impacts of what the traffic...
I understand that.
Of the... We want to get traffic out now while the schools are in session, and then see what impact the traffic has once Jacar... Once Hawk Hollow School is reopened as a middle school. Because it's going to be closed for the next two years, so we want to wait until it's reopened, and we can see what traffic impacts there are.
So, where would this traffic study start, then?
Let me...
To your point.
I would think that if we have to negotiate this, I'd like to see that extended just, you know, a little longer.
The term of the IGA is actually 10 years.
Huh?
The term of the IGA is for 10 years. So, the IGA would continue on for 10 years.
Yes. Okay. Answer my question. Thanks. Good.
So, I think we started this conversation because of safety, and I think all the questions were answered now, that vacating it, everything is safe for the students, the school's going... It's fine. I also feel that there's no value in creating this road, and that we stick with the plan of vacating that part. I think what came out of it is we're doing a traffic study, because that's where we all feel that the safety issue could be. We'll take a look there. But I'm in favor of vacating Fair Oaks.
I'm just a little concerned with the fact that the traffic study isn't going to be very accurate until 2025, when things really start getting cooking with buses and everything going through there.
Yeah.
So, really, a traffic study at this time is pretty useless until the actual school is opened.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse, because you've got massive congestion. That's what I'm picturing, is massive congestion, and then we're going to do a study, and then we're going to make changes. So, it's going to be a flowing thing, right? You're going to have to make changes as we go.
If I may. So, good evening, everyone. It's great to be back. My name's Suzanne Johnson. I'm the superintendent for School District U-46. I reside at Three Thistle Court in Streamwood. Very thankful to have the opportunity to come back this evening. I wanted to offer a point of clarification, though, with the intergovernmental agreement. We actually included another component to that that indicated that if, once the middle school on the property opens, the village finds the need to continue... That continues to exist for an additional traffic study to analyze peak times of use at the intersections, then we would agree for an additional two years to continue to study that traffic and to be available, certainly to collaborate and address concerns or data based on what those needs are. And then I think what was also pointed out is that this is a pretty lengthy IGA as far as our, you know, concerns and commitment are to the children and, of course, the community. And so, we, you know, honor that ongoing discussion and consideration as well. That's outlined also within the IGA.
Yeah. I just want to make sure everybody knew that that was going to be extended into the actual time when the school opens, so...
Yeah.
On the surface, you think it's going to happen right now? Go ahead.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with vacating these minutes, go along with the plan that the Plan Commission passed, and move forward with the original proposal that U-46 District I think that the residents have also spoke, and I think safety in their neighborhoods are a top concern. And I think that the other plan is not safe. And I think that the original plan that the architects and engineers designed is made to make the students safe.
You know, considering the information that we've been able to review since the last meeting, that that's a very valid point. I'm just concerned about the two-year...
Well, they already took care of that.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was concerned about.
Have we considered, though, all the Hawk Hollow stuff aside, have we considered extending Fair Oaks so that one little strip mall doesn't have to try to turn out into traffic? They can actually go across, then have an entrance into the back of the strip mall?
So, are you talking about...
Just the little part that would go across Army Trail.
To connect to Kelly Farm?
Yeah.
Talking about extending it here, or just to...
Yeah. Just to...
Maybe not even to Kelly Farm.
Because right now, that strip mall right there, I don't know if you've ever pulled in and out of that at all, but they're pulling in and out of 45 mile an hour traffic with no stoplight. And what they were planning on when they built that strip mall was to have at least a road, and they were going to shut off the entrance exit to the actual street.
You're right. And I believe water and sewer... I mean, sewer lines and whatnot are in there already. It looks like it's improved, it's ready to be excavated, paved. When I was out there, I looked, and I saw...
We do have the Right-Away for that portion. We have that Right-Away that was already dedicated as part of Fairfax Commons and as part of the MTP Professional Building Approval.
So, where does our Right-Away, then? Where would our Right-Away end, and U-46 take over the property if we decide to vacate this?
So, U-46... We're only vacating the portion that is on the U-46 property. So, there would still be the Right-Away in the enclave subdivision would still exist from the U-46 property line south all the way to Army Trail.
And approximately where... How far south is the U-46 property line?
U-46, kind of, it stops... U-46 stops where the bike path changes material and west.
As opposed to the property owners, you would say, on the west side, where does that...
So, U-46's property kind of comes in at an angle. You can see that here. See if I can pull up.
Does anybody else have any other comments?
Well, I wanted to then bring up the fact that trustee Gunstein at the last meeting made a very, I thought, a pretty good option as far as an alternative egress other than Gerber Road.
Winston Drive. The emergency...
I couldn't remember the name, but it was in the northeast corner, and just making an emergency lane with a gate so that there was no through traffic unless there was a specific emergency, and I don't see that addressed at all.
That was not addressed, because that was something that was part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, was to add a condition that they put in evergreen trees there to block the view for the neighbors to the north. Because the fence line stopped, they didn't want to have to look at the parking lot. So, they said, because the other neighbors further west have a fence, they had requested that evergreen trees be planted.
But the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't know that that idea existed when they had their meeting. That idea came up at our last meeting, and the PZ meeting was before that.
No. You could make... If you wanted to change that condition from the planning and zoning recommendation, you could do that. But again, that's something that the residents that came to the meeting felt very strongly.
Do you have a screen of that, so look at that?
I think what's being overlooked is the safety and the contingencies.
Right.
What's going to happen two years from now, when there's more buses, more kids driving to school or being dropped off? What are... What's our contingency then? We're so... We need to think now what we could do later.
What if these traffic results come back negative? What if there are more accidents? What if there are kids that are stepping in front of cars? What if there is an emergency and we can't get into the school from Gerber Road?
Or out of the school from Gerber Road.
So, we've been focused on putting a road through, but what about those issues?
They're gonna...
Let's say we table put the road through. What if there is an accident on Gerber, and the police or fire needs to get to the school, and they can't access it through Gerber?
That's a great question. But one way of looking at it is currently, it was an elementary school, and we had those same concerns, and we had none of those issues. So, it would be no different as an elementary school as it would be being in a middle school, the things that you brought up.
More people. It's tripling its size, doubling its size? It was gonna...
One thing to add is there's... They're going to have the employer... The parent access at the north end, which we currently don't have. Right now, you only have Jacaranda. So, now you will have two, and the chances of both of those access points being blocked are pretty remote.
I think trustee Laporte, when it opened, correct me if I'm wrong, not correct here, but there were like 600 students there at the beginning of Hawk Hollow.
That is correct.
And there's only going to be 720 or something now?
The goal is approximately 750 students at this time. I also just want to give, you know, highlight that in the past, on very rare occasions, when we have had emergency situations at any of our buildings, especially in the Village of Bartlett, tremendous accolades to our emergency responders, our police department, in working with us and working to direct traffic. So, if it was going to impact an arrival or dismissal, we're either able to problem-solve in advance of that, or we train for those situations as well. And many of you, unfortunately, may have received those notifications. We probably over-communicate. We let you know if we're going to need to delay an arrival or dismissal due to any of those emergent situations. We work very closely with the police department to prepare for those as well. So, I'm certainly, you know, my role as superintendent, very confident about that partnership with the Village of Bartlett, and having the additional egress and entry or exit points, rather, I think we could certainly accommodate that. What I want to highlight again, though, in the IGA, one of the items is around modification. And we highlight in that part that it is recognized that there might be a need on occasion for periodic review of what we've agreed to, and the need to revisit the plan. And again, I think, you know, our commitment to our longstanding collaboration with the village is that if there was data, if there was additional evidence, if there were additional concerns, our intent is to bring this forward to signify and really stand by our collaboration with you, and to be that partner to make sure, first and foremost, it's a safe environment for all of our students, and that supports the greatest opportunity for student growth and student success.
As we heard from the neighbors tonight about how more brewing, and just one little street, Gerber is going to be under that same situation. You're going to have kids going to high school on the morning. I just want to make sure that the parents, that your concerns, your safety concerns regarding the road going through are still... Like Gerber is going to become the new 59. I just want to make sure you guys are...
You don't want a... You don't want an Eastview situation, trust me.
So... I'm going to capital... I'm going to piggyback on what you said. Adding that extension for Fair Oaks to Nor... Is it Norway Court? Is still permitted even if we forego our Right-Aways? Is that correct? Or, yeah, Norway Court, that would be the limited Fair Oaks expansion option?
You were looking it up, I think, Chrissy.
So, Fair Oaks could still be extended from Army Trail Road to the south to Norway in the future. That is not part of the proposal.
And that would tie in...
That's our Right-Away.
That could potentially tie in the Penny Road, or, yeah, Penny Lane dead end, if I'm not mistaken, correct? That's sitting there?
Correct. That's Kelly Farm Road. That could be extended in the future.
I...
So, that would take care of the issue at the medical building, the office building?
Correct.
Yes.
Because I can only speak for myself. That is... That's actually... I would like to make sure that we have access to take care of that project and complete that project, so that Fair Oaks crosses Army Trail properly the way it should, to alleviate that sharp in and out of that medical building.
We have that option of putting that roadway in.
And I can only speak for myself. I don't have any interest in taking someone's property.
Yeah. No. So, I was pretty adamant originally about the Right-Away staying intact, and after reviewing all the costs associated with building this and the return on the investment that the village would get, I think, in my personal opinion, if we're going to shell out this much money, this intersection at Kelly Farm and Fair Oaks will be a good one, as well as enhancing Gerber Road down the line. Because I think we are going to add traffic to Gerber Road. It's going to need some expansion at some point. I still 100% agree, safety is an issue. I was in Burbank last week, and the high school has a push button at the crossing sections, you know, the cross... Right at the crosswalk. There's no lights, there's no stop signs, but you hit the button, and both children crossing signs have strobe lights that flash. It's another alternative. I still think we should have Gerber Road and... Or Schick, a four-way stop or a stop light at some point soon.
I think that's a...
Hopefully, the traffic...
I think it's a dangerous intersection, no matter what, because people actually are speeding from Mayflower up over the bridge all the way down till you get to West Bartlett Road, or Bartlett Road. And it's a long stretch, and if you try to turn west or east onto Schick, it is... It's a wait. I mean, at certain times of day. I'm not saying it all the time, but it is a wait. So, I think, in my opinion, the future of Gerber Road has to be looked at overall, you know?
So, could you kind of just give us... I don't know if you can make this... Bring this up and kind of zoom in on a little bit more to show if we tied Fair Oaks in at the Penny Lane area?
So, if Fair Oaks were to come in, you could stop it? You could stop Fair Oaks at Kelly Farm Road, which would align with one of the curb cuts that was originally planned for the MTP Professional Buildings?
Mm-hmm.
They were originally planned, when Fair Oaks went through, that they would have two curb cuts onto Fair Oaks. So, their parking lot's actually designed to lose a few spaces to have those connections go through in the future. And then they would be losing access on Army Trail Road once that connection... Those connections happened.
And then it would... So, then it would tie up into Kelly Farm, you said, right?
This is Kelly Farm Road.
And then what is the road that's going north and south there on a curve?
This is Penny.
This is Penny Lane? And then Penny Lane, does Penny Lane go through?
Penny Lane goes through to Fairfax Lane, and I'll... Ooh, it's zooming out of my zone. It kind of circles around to Fairfax.
I mean, going north, though.
It connects again to Fairfax, which connects to Schick Road.
Okay, which connects to Schick. So, without cutting through the neighborhoods that everyone is talking about, we could still get that connection from Fair Oaks?
That would actually alleviate some of the traffic on Gerber.
Right. That's something that we could look at in a future capital project budget.
If we vacate this portion for U-46, we had some people that were concerned this evening about the Fair Oaks, the Right-Away in their property. How does that affect them?
That part of Fair Oaks would be eliminated on the future land use plan.
I didn't understand.
So, that part of Fair Oaks Road would not be shown on the future land use plan.
Okay.
So, it would show that the Fair Oaks Right-Away only would exist, how it does now, further south in the enclave subdivision and by MTP Professional Building.
Any other questions? Concerns? Feedback?
So, who maintains that, then? Will we maintain that, or will U-46 maintain that?
It would become part of U-46's property.
Up to a certain point.
Right.
Right. Is that part... Is that what's here? Because this has kind of gotten very confused. Do we have to... Do we have to adjust what's here?
So, if you look at... So, the Right-Away that would be vacated by U-46 would stop just south of Hawk Hollow Drive, south to Mr. Burris's property, and then a small triangular piece on the south side of their property. That would become part of their... They would have one parcel that would maintain... They would maintain all of that.
Is that in our packet this way?
That's how their plans are shown now.
All right.
When we adjourn into our board meeting, will there be a motion, or is there a motion prepared to match vacating these?
Yes. We have an alternate version of the ordinance prepared, yes.
Perfect.
Trustee Gunstein, are you satisfied with that plane, that exit, that emergency access?
I would like to see the exit at Winston Drive, even if it's some sort of access through there for, you know, for emergency vehicles only, while respecting the fact that they want screening there. But again, I believe it was said that it could be accommodated, you know, and if that is something that can be accommodated, great.
In the future?
You know?
We separate those two out?
Yeah. I think in the future, if it becomes necessary.
I mean, we would certainly go back and research that. We did not have additional conversation. In our last meeting, it seemed that that was an option that was not brought forward for us to continue to research, so we would certainly have to research that and then come back to you.
It's being left, and it's being built, that it could potentially be added in the future. I think that's what trustee Hopkins is indicating, that, you know, because there's not a brick wall or a concrete wall there, that it could be used in the future as a...
This is Claudia Wolf at 2200 Capit Drive in Lyle. Yes, we can definitely accommodate a future road. Right there, some kind of pathway, or even a depressed curb, so if they were need to do that in the future, it'd be easy to get through. So... But like we talked about with the trees that we're now proposing, those residents wanted, we'd have to just move those over, or come up with an alternate plan there for their screen.
I think it's something to keep on the docket for the future, for sure.
All right. So, yeah. If nobody has any other feedback or concerns, we'll send this off to the board for approval. All right. I'll entertain a motion adjourned in the committee meeting?
So moved.
Second. By trustee Sawansky, second by trustee Ganzie? The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sawansky?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Ganzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Once again, adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting, Act Two, July 18, 2023. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes, here.
Ganzie?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Sawansky?
Present.
President Wallace?
Here. Second item, we already covered the first item. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Community and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Ganzie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see that the representative from Savory stuck it out. But we have one item, Savory Restaurant BETA application. Savory Restaurant Pancake Cafe has been located in the Westgate Commons Shopping Plaza for 16 years. It is a successful family-run business and has been an anchor for that shopping center, attracting many diners from throughout the area. Cespina Catrescos is the owner-operator Savory and has been planning a comprehensive expansion and update of her restaurant for the past several years, she has submitted $97,387 worth of planned improvements, with $59,786.95 being eligible through the BETA program. Some of those improvements include demolition, framing, drywall, paneling, cabinets, countertops, a new sign, and an additional 40 seats being added, 20 inside and 20 outside. The Economic Development Commission reviewed Savory's BETA application at its June 12 meeting, at which time it recommended in favor of a maximum 50% grant of $29,893.48. Please note that this application was reviewed by the EDC under the original BETA program terms, since it was worked on and applied for on April 28, 2023, prior to changes being adopted on June 20, 2023, the applicant has since been apprised of the new regulations and has signed the BETA program application addendum.
When is it open, when are we, when are we getting that done?
Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock.
No, it's okay, I think that's great, congratulations and improvements on that, I know it's, um, Saturday morning is, uh, Sunday morning, Saturday mornings, it's a bit of a wait, so this will help out a lot, yeah, it's great.
Are you anticipating ever, like, opening up for dinner a couple of nights a week again, never? Never, okay.
It's a hard no.
Hard no.
All right, I don't have any issues.
Nope.
My only request is to keep the healthy breakfast on the menu, because it seems like everything I like is always taken off of other menus, but I love your, the grilled chicken and the egg whites.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll forward this request for a $29,893.48 BETA grant for Savory Restaurant for a final vote to the next village board meeting.
Which will be August 14, is that right?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, August 15, all right, thanks for coming out, guys. Thank you Chairman Gansey, I'm back to my, I didn't print this up for some reason, and the final thing we have this evening, um, for our committee meeting is Public Works and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we have a COMED reliability discussion, COMED was invited to address the village board on a series of issues, the board was also asked for reliability analysis and what upgrades and equipment are planned, as well as communications with our residents, uh, External Affairs Manager Greg, Galles, I pronounced that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, will provide a brief presentation and answer any questions the committee has relative to COMED, and with that, I'd like to introduce, please.
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, for those of you who already know me, Dan, Scott, Joey, Sam, everybody in the Public Works Department, um, a lot of the village administration staff, our first responders that we work closely with, uh, a lot of times because COMED utility systems are focused on all of our residents, our businesses and stuff like that, um, like to first and foremost, extend appreciation, I, I work closely with President Wallace a couple of times on some major downtown projects that we wanted to keep on track, uh, we wanted to make sure that our facility relocations, our poles were moved and, and set and aligned with everything that the village needed, um, so thank you for that. Uh, I want to take a, a quick minute just to share some of the system improvements and programs that we have in place, uh, for the Village of Bartlett, uh, very quickly and briefly, uh, we're going to review the SAFE and CADI indices, which are the metrics for reliability and performance, um, I'll go over quickly some of the corrective maintenance we do, the distribution automation, uh, the cable replacement programs, our vegetation management system, and ultimately, I'll share with you very briefly some of our energy efficiency programs that we offer our residents, and, uh, the resources that we share through our website, via our texting and all of our other avenues, um, beginning with, Bartlett is a phenomenal village, and our residents should be very proud to be a part of this maintenance pally, the Village of Bartlett experienced a 99.99% reliability rate in the year of 2022, um, so, as you can see, the graph shows a 10-year historical graph of where we are now in, in, uh, contrast to where we were in 2011, reliability, we're definitely trending in a very, very extremely positive path, um, for 2022, the SAFE, which is the average number of interruptions that a customer experiences, was actually less than one, and from less than one, it was actually less than half, it was .42, um, so we have a lot of positive feedback from the residents here in Bartlett, and, um, being on 99.9% percentile for the entire service territory is, it shows a lot about our board, it shows a lot about the decisions that our mayor takes, a lot about, you know, the staff that they, they have and how they proceed with some of their decisions in terms of utility use, um, on the next slide, you'll be able to see our CADI, which is the average length that some of the residents experience interruptions, in 2022, it was roughly 100 minutes, um, and that's the approximate average that, uh, the entire service territory experienced throughout the year, now, you might say, 100 minutes, that's ridiculous, and we believe so too, 100 minutes, it's ridiculous for, for everybody and anybody, and that stems from some of these major storms that we've been experiencing, um, seven or 10 years ago, we'd, we would experience a major weather disaster every four or five years, every other summer, nowadays, it's every winter and every summer where we, tornadoes in the middle of the city of countryside in Hodgkins, we experienced, um, I believe you guys were definitely affected in early parts of this year with the snow and ice storm that was extremely heavy and knocked down a lot of poles and wires, um, as you can see, the interruption by calls shows everything from our weather-related events to our, uh, public encounters where individuals were unfortunately crashing to some of our poles and knocked down stuff like that, uh, our animal-related events, uh, everything from scheduling, um, different tree trimming for personalized residents, sometimes they want to get rid of a tree and they schedule an outage, and unfortunately, we have to knock out a few other residents while we do that as well, um, to give a brief recap on 2022, the distribution automation program included two different circuits, um, and this year for 2023, we have an additional two circuits that we're going to be working on, the underground residential distribution cable program addressed the reliability on three separate circuits, from the circuit inspections from last year in '22, we did a complete 14 circuits, and of those circuits, we completed 73 corrective maintenance items, um, for this year, we're currently at a completed 16 circuits, and from those 16, we're up to 12 corrective maintenance items, and that's still to increase because we still have plenty of time in the summer, which is where we primarily focus our corrective maintenance, uh, items for the, the circuits that feed the Village of Bartlett, and the distribution tree trimming, which performed approximately 38 miles in 2022, which is just us doing thermal imaging, going around our circuits, making sure that if we see major branches leaning over our, over our lines, over our poles, that we address those before some of these major storms can knock them down and cause some issues, um, we have five circuits that we plan to, uh, focus on this year for our tree trimming program, and in 2022, we actually replace and reinforce two different poles through our wood pole performance program, um, just to give you a very brief recap, for example, our underground replacement and residential distribution cable program, um, near the, near Bartlett Road, we did about roughly 400 feet of underground cable, Faith Lane, 1,400 feet, uh, Francine Drive, 1,200 feet, Dogwood was 1,500 feet, and, uh, Martin Dale was 1,000 feet of underground cable. Next slide, this will show you those different circuits and the tree trimming that we performed, um, I'm not going to bore you with those, but there's a lot planned for the rest of the year, obviously throughout the summer, it's our summer critical program, where we invest heavily in our resources and make sure that we're out there overviewing every single one of our circuits and making sure that we identify those possible issues, um, before I get into the storm tree debris issues, I definitely want to give you guys a glimpse into how our restoration efforts work, when there's major, major weather storms, tornadoes, uh, ice storms and whatnot, um, we obviously focus on our critical facilities, so everything from hospitals to police stations, fire stations, the village hall, public works departments, water pump stations, that is the focus and primary determination of our strategy when there's major, major weather, um, once we encompass that and have a strategy around that, we then focus our efforts on major tickets, so tickets that cover 3,000 residents at once, 1,700 residents, top hundreds of residents, so our, our focus is to bring back as many people as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible, and then making our way down to the smaller tickets, which unfortunately will cost more residents to be concerned, and they'll reach out and say, hey, why were we out for 45 minutes during that snowstorm, well, your ticket was unfortunately only six different people, it was one transformer that blew, or it was one cable that went down, and we got to you guys in approximately an hour and 12 minutes, so, it's, it's just kind of the tier program of how we work our restoration efforts, um, for storm tree debris, obviously, just to brief recap, our common responsibilities are making sure that we cut, we trim, and we remove any trees in efforts to just restore service immediately, um, and the responsibility of the customer is obviously to dispose of those branches, so any other debris logs and damage that caused upon the swarm, not only do we focus on residential areas and our businesses, but we also do our own internal work, so our transmission and substations, we have our own maintenance program, so where we do a lot of tree trimming around there, uh, we focus on preventive maintenance and doing, uh, thermal imaging, making sure that all of our retaining walls and everything around the substation is up to par, um, and in some cases, we even, uh, leave some unmode and native vegetation, because there is a department within COMED that is focused on, uh, the green movement, and we would, we'd like to continue to support the pollinator population, so sometimes it's better to support with certain plants, certain grass, and we make sure that we don't just completely remove everything, and we make sure that certain things stay where they are. Next slide, energy efficiency, uh, one of the big staples of COMED is our energy efficiency program, which began in 2008, uh, it's a way for our customers, our residents and our businesses to, uh, focus on energy savings, uh, however and how, and as many times as they might need, um, from 2018 to 2022, we had 1,100 different participants from the Village of Bartlett, and there was a $1.7 million savings for those 1,100 individuals that chose to participate, um, I'll, I'll definitely be able to share that image with you guys in case you want to send it out via e-newsletter or post it on the website, uh, it's just a way to show that a lot of the residents are taking advantage of the cost savings and making sure that, you know, if there's any way to save with a smart thermostat, uh, recycling fridges or, or whatever they can do, um, they do with the help of COMED and its resources, um, the next two or three slides are just a focus of scam alerts, what to look for when you're a resident, we don't reach out to you, we don't come to your door, we don't call your business, we don't ask you for any information, because we all have that in our system, so it's just another, another image that you can share again on the webs, on the village website, just showing folks what to look for, um, a lot of the contacts and resources that our public works department already has in terms of outage maps, uh, reporting centers, storm centers, um, all the social media where we provide adequate updates whenever there is a big event that affects, uh, a good amount of the residents, and finally, the next two slides are smart assistance management systems, payment plans, and just a plethora of information that we also still provide through our different internal departments for the customers of Village of Bartlett, so having said that, uh, again, I'd like to open it up for any questions or any concerns, I do understand that there was a focus, and it was Scott's great idea to invite me and make sure that I, I share with you guys how proud we are of the Village of Bartlett, having achieved that 99.9% reliability rate, um, I do understand that every so often, we do have customers that say, hey, we were out during that ice storm, you know, why weren't we back up, well, we were focusing first and foremost on the water pump station, and then the public works department, and then we got to you within, you know, 65 minutes, so, uh, if you guys have any questions or any concerns, anything you want to raise, uh, feel free to do so.
Could you touch base on how you got to 100 minutes as your average downtime, was that on that slide?
Yeah, the 100 minutes both covered the COMED service territory as a whole, throughout the entire state of Illinois, but it was also the small group of individuals in Bartlett that were down during some of these major storms, that is roughly the average of time that it took to get them back up.
Because the neighbors that I have were down two and a half days, so that's problematic, and it was not just one time, it's several times.
Okay.
It's the same area, so, I know you highlighted, um, the south end of town getting upgrades, it doesn't seem like the north end of town has got much upgrades, and that's the older part of Bartlett, so I think there's, your numbers and statistics, if they're across the state of Illinois, they look great, but the residents in Bartlett see a different picture.
Absolutely, and it...
I was one of the residents that were down for two days.
Sure.
And my neighbors, I was up, but they were down two and a half days.
And, and, and that's the very peculiar thing, so, if you're on a street, one side of the street can be a different circuit as opposed to the opposite side, so a lot of times, our residents' neighbors will be concerned, why are they not out when I'm out, um, and if I could take down that, is there a specific block?
Yeah.
Then I can do a very deep dive with my reliability team and kind of get to...
You can look at Eastern Avenue, Morris Avenue, and it's the opposite side, uh, west side of Tatchy, um, but that's just what I see, you know, what's happening in Bartlett as a whole, and that doesn't depict what's happening in my community, and I think that's kind of what I really want to know, what's happening in my community, and what other neighborhoods in Bartlett are down for two and a half hours, or two and a half days, I mean.
How do you match this?
Some people across the street that are down, but I've never been down one minute.
How does, how does COMED match this with, like, perception of residents?
It, it's definitely tough, and it's, it's almost a gift and a curse, right, we've gotten to the point where we can get people back up with a very slight two-second momentary, well, they'll see a flicker, but they're back up after this huge storm, um, and unfortunately, a lot of our residents say, hey, we were out for 35 minutes, and we'll go through the system, we'll identify, it was actually six minutes, and we got them back up immediately, but a lot of times, since they, they're receiving such a good focus on the reliability, where they haven't been out for years at a time, they'll experience one, and the perception is, we're always out, and we're always down for, for several, uh, for several hours on it, but, uh, we do focus on getting our reliability team and engineers out into the general public, we do a lot of outreach via social media when they, you know, our Facebook page gets bombarded with folks asking, hey, we're down, when are we going to be back up, then we have a specific team that focuses on getting them that information immediately.
We, we did, I just want to mention, sorry to interrupt, we did let our external affairs team, our friends there at COMED know by your specific request, so we, we hoped that they would, uh, have a little more detail, but we'll talk in the next few days, and I'll make sure those streets are identified, that we get some feedback for you in detail.
I, I want to make sure that the residents that are down for two and a half days, I know, I think it was three years ago, over, I want to say Fairfax, they were down for, like, three or four days, it was like crazy.
Three years ago, more than likely the duratio, right? Yes.
So...
It was...
Was that correct to them?
Throughout the COMED service territory, that, three years ago, so that focus was on last year, like, three years ago during the duratio, we had well over a million customers out because of the 90 mile an hour winds that caused so much, so much damage during that duratio, but yeah, you're absolutely right, um, and those major weather events are what causes us to focus on improvements in reliability, um, so not only getting back to our transformers and our overhead lines, replacing the overhead cable with this much stronger cable that can sustain several hundred pounds of ice as opposed to some of the older cable that can only sustain a handful of pounds, um, and that's, that's definitely the focus, but yes, three, I, I...
I appreciate you coming, and like I said, these statistics are great, thank you for sharing them.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I would love to see statistics for my community, though, because it's not 100 minutes.
Sure, and...
That is Bartlett.
What?
That is Bartlett.
How can, how can he say it's down for 100 minutes when the people across the street from me were down for two and a half days?
Right, my...
It's an average.
My...
It's an average of the course.
It was, so the 100-minute mark was for the year 2022, uh, if you look back in 2019, if you can go back to the CADI slide.
This was last year. This was last year, it happened again.
We were out for two, two days last year?
It was, yeah, my neighbors were.
Okay, and do you, do you have any...
Eastern Avenue?
Eastern Avenue, okay, and you said Morris Avenue as well, right? Make sure, I'll get this back to my reliability team, have them do a deep dive, do a historical review.
That would be great.
Maybe do five, seven years, um, and then we can...
They flooded, they lost thousands of dollars worth of stuff, and, I mean, they look at me, and they're like, well, what are you doing, I'm like, well, I'm not COMED, and, and then they're like, well...
It's bizarre how it works in different neighborhoods, because our neighbors across the street go out quite a bit, and we never do.
And I will say, and maybe, as you mentioned, improvements in different parts of town, there was a time where I lived, when the wind would blow, our power would go out, but it doesn't anymore, I mean...
It's, it's definitely changed.
I mean, it, not that it hasn't ever, but it's not nearly as bad as it used to be.
Absolutely, and, and I'll, I take your concern very seriously, and I'll make sure that my reliability team does a historical deep dive, and I'll be able to get you that information.
That'd be great, I appreciate that.
Thanks for being here, Mr. President.
Thank you.
President, thank you, Board of Trustees, Scott, Dan, everybody. I entertain, thank you, Trustee, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Hopkins, or the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.